We're here for the planning board meeting Thursday, March 13th, 2025. Can we stand for a second and do the pledge of allegiance? And we'll get going. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one. Thanks, everyone. The first part of our agenda is board business. The first item is the minutes of February 13th. Has everyone had a chance to review them? And does anyone have comments on them?
I reviewed them. I didn't have any comments.
I don't have no comments. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. Bills, do we have any bills?
We do. We just buried them.
Okay.
Have three bills, one for office supplies from WB Mason, one for registration for the CPTC conference this weekend, and one peer review bill for Creed International for 550 Utown Road.
Since we mentioned the CPTC, it's this Saturday, I'm gonna go for one of the morning presentations on the ADU. Is anyone else going?
Yes, I'm gonna go.
Excellent. What did you sign up for? Do you remember?
I don't remember. I was hoping the confirmation reminded me.
Well, I'll...
If I have registration, you'll get them.
I'll look for you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I might have done ADUs and there was a couple others.
Okay. I'm just, I just can't, I can't do any more than the morning. That's great. Okay. So other, I'm gonna go through some quick things and then we're gonna have a presentation by Jim Dugan, the town administrator, about the disposition of this building. We were given some links to a few things, one of which was the Unlocking Housing Production Commission report. I made the mistake of printing it out, not realizing it was a hundred and some pages long. If anyone, if anyone needs, if anyone wants to take this and look at it, feel free. Otherwise, you can access it online. It's quite comprehensive. It does not have any, you know, imperative of law, but if they, if some of these recommendations are taken up, we may see some changes. We've also talked, in our email, talked about the 40 Y zoning. I encourage people to look that up, and I don't necessarily see its applicability to Littleton, but other, you know, some of you may find some, something we could hang our head on there. Marin informs me that we are, can you explain the office coordinator issue? We're getting, we're getting someone back or whatever?
Well, let's see. So the planning budget for next year, as presented, includes Cooper and I both full-time and then Lucia at 32 hours a week. Right now, she's being loaned out to the Greater Land Use Department while there's an opening there.
Okay. And then we'll get her back. They'll get, they'll get an open, okay, fine. I wanted to mention that. I do want to tell everyone that I will not be able to attend town meeting. I have a long planned trip, and not planned by me, but my wife insists I go along. And so we will, I'd like each of you to think about, you know, we'll have two issues, the, at least as of now, the marijuana, which is much simpler than it was last town meeting, and the flood zone, which I think pretty much everyone's eyes are gonna glaze over about that. So we'll deal with that later. Now, Jim has organized, he had, and the Affordable Housing Trust people probably know about this, he would like to bring forward to town meeting a vote to declare this building surplus, and, which would be the first step in repurposing this building. And why don't you go ahead from there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We also have, liar calling in, we have, we have Town Council Attorney, Attorney Merrill also available for any questions that you may have from a legal standpoint. This conversation had started over 14, 15 months ago when I was interviewing for this position with the select board members on the vision that was happening with 550 King Street, which also included a major component of deeply affordable rental senior housing for 30% to 60% AMI. So as the, as time has gone on, the, we, as you know, we've received necessary infrastructure funding for first phase of that, for the infrastructure for there, and that is going to break around the middle of next month in April. Middle to the end of next month is when they will start putting in the infrastructure of 550 King Street. So as part of Phase One, the developer had, had requested to us of whether the affordable component in Phase One can be postponed to a later date, to a later phase. In conversing with, we have our internal team, we completely agreed immediately that that was not in the best interest of the project, of the town, actually. What we suggested back to the developer was, if you accelerate identifying and capturing the afford, the deeply affordable at an earlier component of the construction phase, because as you all know, the project is multiple years of phases, you know, seven, eight, eight years. So not wanting that to get into the rearview mirror and stay there, we thought that was an opportunity as leverage to say, let's, let's get something that is a very pressing need here in this community soon rather than later. And the first step, according to Town Council, would be to declare this property surplus and allow us to do the necessary procurement process to go to declare it surplus and identify the proper developer. What has, since I met with various chairs of particular committees to give them the 10,000-foot description of this project, more things have evolved, in a good way. Because one of the things that I had shared with the chair, with the chair, chairpersons of those various committees was the fact that we would look at, we would be looking at temporarily moving to another space and for us to vacate this, which obviously would cost, would cost money for us to do that. However, what has, from the internal team, so our team, internal team consists of Marin, we've got Cooper, we've got our building commissioner, Town Council, and we also have Ryan for Finance Director, and we also have Judy Barrett of Barrett Planning, who is well-seasoned individual for these kinds of projects, community outreach and community engagement. So what we would, what has really come to the, come to the surface is the light that this is a perfect project right here. We're talking 40 units of those deeply affordable units. And we would, and it's, it is a perfect project for low-income housing tax credits. As we've been advised by, by our Town Council and our consultant, the low-income housing tax credit is a daunting process. The application is literally the size of the New York phone book. It's a three-ring binder. It's a massive undertaking to get to that point. Plus, the developer has to be well-seasoned in being able to accomplish that and have gone through the process before. So it's in the best interest of the developer for this project to partner with a nonprofit affordable housing developer that has the track record. But what we found advantageous to us is that we can take off of the table is a temporary relocation as we identify, as the part of the procurement process, identify a permanent location with the potential of a certain level of a build-out on, on an initial building of a future, of a future town hall. So now, which is good, so we, during that process of the low-income housing tax credits, we won't have to relocate. We would be here. And what, the main purpose for that low-income housing tax credit application, the owners of the developer and the nonprofit housing developer will have to have control of the property. They would essentially be the landlord. They would be the landlord. So in part of the RFP process, we would identify and make it perfectly clear the fact that we will, we will remain here and then we will identify, I mean, it's my goal to go into it as, be completely transparent a dollar a year, I mean, to look at that. So a lot of moving parts. We're talking with, we had a meeting with FinCom the other evening. We've presented to the Select Board. We're scheduled, we also presented to the Council on Aging, and we are scheduled, I believe, on the 19th to talk with the Affordable Housing Trust in greater detail, such as I'm here with you right now. So we can, we, in preparation for town meeting, there are a number of different data points that we are working on to, to identify, to identify those, those points, such as the cost to actually, what it would cost when we are ready to move, and I'm talking, moving would be probably three to four years away. So we would be looking at something of, the cost of, as I said, the RFP would be shaped in a way of, we would identify, the site would be identified, and there would be a certain level of development, essentially a shell of a, of a building, of a town hall. But within that shell, and the building commissioner and Ryan have worked very, very hard in identifying components of that shell which are costly. And some of those examples that I can give you is FiSH suppression systems, handicap bathrooms, ADA compliance, HVAC, some mechanicals that would, the mechanicals that would go in there, the things that would be ready for us when we move in. So we would go in, look at furniture and fixtures and putting up walls and identifying that area, areas for, for the different offices. And the other thing, the other financial component is, when we get to that point, in working with the FinCom, we would wanna make sure that any expenditure falls within the levy. So it is not gonna be something that we're gonna go back to town meeting and say, we need a debt exclusion. We understand that, what the town is facing, we are very sensitive to that, and with, and everyone is very supportive of the Sheikah Lane School, and I know that there is also conversations in regards to a DPW location. So FinCom has worked very hard to identify a mechanism and a process of making sure we're budgeting properly and minimizing, or doing every effort we can to make sure that that burden is off the taxpayer as much as possible, and for us to be able to budget for it moving forward. To a point that the, the process in which identifies the DPW and the Sheikah Lane financing going forward is gonna be memorialized with the Select Board, with the school committee, the superintendent and myself, and the finance director to make sure that as we get further down the road, memories or positions don't change. So, because it's a very, it's a very, it's a strict process that the finance committee, Chairman Vannuti, has done a marvelous job identifying the process. So I'm here to answer any other questions. We've got Town Council, Marin and Cooper have done fantastic, and we have the building commissioner here for any particular questions, and looking to have a successful vote on May 6th, and we can hope that the planning board can voice that support also at that meeting.
Can I pause for one minute?
I'm done. Yep.
The 6:45 agended continued public hearing was for 550 Utown Road. Is anyone here for that? I'm mentioning it because they've withdrawn their application.
Right. Did they withdraw like they did the last time, or is this a different type of withdrawal? I know the last time was without prejudice, I think.
We are...
So the request is to withdraw without prejudice. That's the recommendation.
So we, it is like the last time.
So we can expect them back in another year, probably.
I could not comment on what their intentions are. They, what they've communicated to us is that it doesn't make financial sense for them to do it. Okay. So we'll go to that in a minute, but let's continue with...
No, I'm, I'm, that's pretty much all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I have some questions.
Please.
So, so I guess I'm, wanna, a little bit of clarity to start with. You opened it up that this is related to 550 King Street here. They were in two, two months ago, and this was, I asked them directly about this, and this was not something that they said that they had in their plans there. So Partey wants to know what changed in the last two months on that. But the other part is, I'm, I'm on board that if we want to, you know, identify this parcel and put it out for bid, but I'm not comfortable at this point why we're tying it to 550.
Well, I guess maybe I can answer that, since I was on the, I was on the boardroom when you permitted 550. In the middle of doing 550, the discussion about this particular property came up as an alternative to the affordable housing that was there. The thought was to put all the senior housing in one place and make it deeply discounted as, as was stated, and that, it's been on the table for six years, seven years. It's not, it's, this is not...
Yeah, but their, their approval is that their buildings out there will include senior housing, or affordable house, or off-site. But this project would need to be, it's on its own independent timeline. It needs to be put out, my understanding is, is there was an RFP a few years ago that there was at least three organizations interested in doing this, so I don't see how we are dedicating this project to, how are we circumventing all of the open acquisition rules with this?
Jenny, can you chime in? I'm here on mute.
No. Dave, can you help with the audio? So I think it's this side.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
So we're not, we would have to go out for an RFP. It is not a, oh, now there's only me. It would not be certain that he would get that awarded to him. But the, the RFP cannot be issued until town meeting has authorized the Select Board to declare it available for disposition. So that's why this first step may seem logically premature to declare the town offices available for disposition now. It's really the first thing that has to happen for a long process to go into effect.
No, I, I understand that part of it. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is, is why we're linking it to affordable units at 550, since we can't guarantee that 550 would receive, would be the successful there.
Sorry, there's a, an echo or a delay. I think that's just context to how we got here, that the, you know, the project started with discussions with the owner of 550 King Street, but it's been brought around to, you know, so identify this building as a place where we can have deeply affordable senior housing, which would be awarded to the most advantageous proposal that the town receives after issuing an RFP. So that may or may not be the owner of 550 King Street, and then what occurs with his other project, if he was awarded that contract, would sort of be decided later.
I guess that's, that, I guess that kind of reinforces what my point is, is I'm okay with, with the discussion about, you know, separating this parcel, talking about making deeply affordable things there, but I'm not comfortable any connection to the approvals at 550 and the expectations of their affordable housing units, because they're independent projects, they're not coupled projects. And I'm uncomfortable with us saying that, specifically in referencing 550 as part of this discussion, because it sort of implies that we've already got a preferred bidder on something that we haven't even put out for declared surplus yet.
I concur.
So I'm comfortable if we want to proceed having a discussion about setting, cutting a portion of this parcel aside for putting out the bid for a deeply affordable housing, but that's independent of any discussion of 550.
Yeah.
If, so part, I mean, what a general conversation, the general conversation that has been, as I, as I said earlier, in which Mr. Montanari has referenced the conversation, it also included identifying a site and a permanent off-site location to be able to do that. And if there is, as, as basically, and I'll use a, you know, a very simple term in terms of a swap, which is based upon you going through the procurement process, is permissible. If you identify and say, this is available, you have to be able to create the 40 units of senior, deeply affordable senior housing, and in, and we're also looking to the opportunity to reestablish town hall location.
But that's not the proposal on the table. The proposal that we're talking about is declaring this surplus so that it could be put out to bid for deeply affordable housing.
Correct. And that, and that RFP, the component of that RFP could include that, what I just explained. So the first step, as Attorney Merrill said, was to, first step is to identify this, that will give us that opportunity to move, to move forward with declaring it surplus. And then as we craft that, as the, as General Counsel is crafting that RFP, we're able to identify what's the most advantageous thing for the town to, to be, to be, to approve.
So I'll jump back in again, since I was there six, seven years ago, for total clarity, so that everybody understands where we're coming from. This was discussed as part of the permitting process, to close downtown hall here, to potentially build a town hall over there, as Jim was saying, as a swap, and get deeply affordable here, and that's all it's been. He still has to win the bid. So we're just being, and I shouldn't say win, you're just being transparent that this is something that has been in discussion for over six years.
And as Attorney, correct, as Attorney Merrill had, had said, I mean, this would put out to, it'd be, the opportunity would be available to any other property owner, developer, within the town of Littleton. So if there is, if there is another property owner and developer that would like to submit a bid, and if that isn't the best, if that's, if they can fulfill the opportunity with the conditions that would be in the RFP, fantastic, in, in regards to looking at the deeply affordable units, looking at exploring the low-income housing tax credit, partnering with a nonprofit housing developer, which are all above board. There's nothing, yeah, there's...
I think my discomfort comes about, I understand that was historical context, but what if I look at what's in the permit, that none of that's in the permit.
It is actually in the permit. And this permit is off-site potential for...
No, yes, off-site, but not necessarily that it's this space.
It was...
If that's not in the permit...
And technically, that's true.
Technically, it's true, but this was always...
But that's all I have to do. I wasn't part of those. I can read the, the documents, see what's, what's there. The other concern I have is understanding the timelines of when 550 apartments would come online and what would have been our expectation of when the affordable units would be made available versus the timeline of an independent project that's at the very, we're just starting that now.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure that I, again, because we are, we end up then coupling the projects, I don't know when our affordable units would come available, because like, right now, I'm expecting that they become available when they finish construction of the building.
Well, and that was initially, the initial, that was the request from the developer of 550 to say, you know, can we postpone that or defer those affordable units to a later phase, and then that's when we said, no.
When we see the formal request for that.
Can I finish, please? I'm sorry.
Well, there's a lot of things, but this is what I brought up when they came in two months ago, is there's a lot of other discussions going on and what was out in the public. Right now, what you're talking about is not then in the public discussion. They did not mention that they would be looking to, to do this when they were in.
Correct.
Now, so now I want to start knowing what kind of timelines and other things that are they gonna commit to for this, so that we know when that built, their first building's built. It sounds like they don't wanna put the affordable units in there, they, but that now makes a gap of when we were assuming affordable units would be available to some unknown date, based on an unknown project, based on unknown approvals, on when those affordable units would become available. I'm not comfortable with that ambiguity.
And those are certainly all fair questions to ask during the site plan process when that comes forward for the first multifamily units at that site. An inclusionary housing bylaw allows for the development to begin with no affordable units right at the very beginning, but they have to be ramped up throughout the process. When we wrote that bylaw, we understood that when you start a multifamily development, it takes a lot to get it going, a lot to get started, so most of the first units are market rate under any conditions. So that's certainly part of the discussion that I would expect the board to have when you look at the first site plan.
I would actually beg to differ. So I'm looking at Exhibit A with the conditions, and it very specifically talks about the anticipated construction years, Phase One of Buildings O, Q, and P3, 2025 to 2026 with 287 residential units.
Exactly. That's right.
And that they are supposed to come into play at 10% of every building that's built. So technically speaking, 29 of those units should be affordable units.
You're not taking into account the inclusionary zoning bylaw that gives a timeframe of when those affordable units come onboard.
I would like you to show that to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to interject for a minute. We're getting off, it's certainly a topic we will be coming to, but that's not what's before us now. What is before us now is whether we support declaring this building surplus property. The details of the deals, the potentials, I mean, I have concerns, I have concerns about the low-income housing tax credits, because in our current situation in Washington, they may not exist.
That's why, that's again, back to coupling the projects. I think, I'm all on board with a lot of...
But, but we've never talked about, Jim has never talked about coupling the projects, because there is no contractual coupling at this moment.
Then why talk about it that way?
What, no, I think it's totally reasonable for him to bring forward a very interested party. If there was no one else developing in Littleton, we'd be a little at sea here about declaring this surplus property. What would happen to it? We have at least one very motivated and qualified person to undertake the redevelopment of this building. But, once again, all that we're here tonight is to assess whether this building can be declared surplus property.
So rather than waste any more time, can we just vote on whether we wanna add this, put our two cents worth in? this, put our two cents worth in to say that we agree that this can be used as surplus property and move along?
And, and I, and that's fine, and all this other discussion is excellent, and it's for maybe April, I don't know when they'll be in here next, but they'll, they'll have to be for, they, he says that he wants to start building in the fall, and before, you know, he can't, he can't do that until we hash out all this stuff. So, and in the meantime, if we had three other interested parties, well.
Well, I, I guess I caution the, our board and the town, and I guess the town administrator, by opening the comments that 550 is interested in doing this, you're projecting that you have a preferred bidder.
That, that's a fair comment.
And I'm very concerned about that.
I mean, Jim, I think you should take that, you know, under advisement.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Baker.
And then, I have just a couple of minor comments since, because it comes into play in the later thing here. Unwinding this parcel, so, a few years ago, when I was on school committee, I brought forth the stuff to separate the school parcel from the town hall, so that town hall was actually under care, care and custody of the select board there. But I noticed that the town never filed a formal deed modification to indicate that the parcel's been split there. And likewise, I don't know if it's been split for the senior center or the library there. But if we're gonna sell this building here, clearly, there's a lot of deed work that needs to go on, as well as, as my concern comes, is the parking in the back here is shared between all three buildings, where, you know, how are you going to divide this building out and then cut enough for 40 parking spots for 40 units?
Okay.
And allow access to the, to the two recessed buildings. So I think there's a significant amount of deed and parcel work there. What I noticed, it ties together, sorry, I'm a little long-winded here, is when we then get around to, you know, everybody says, because it's part of a 42 acre thing here, our change in impervious is insignificant. However, once we split this off to a three, two or three acre lot, almost 100% of this is impervious because of just the way the building's constructed, which again, then will affect all of the approvals later on.
These are all excellent points.
I want to identify those, because I, I just want to go on the record for the town to make sure that they're starting to address those.
They are.
Yes, if I can, Mr. Chamberlain, and so, one of the first questions you had earlier, Mr. Baker, was, last time they were here, this is the first you've heard of it, essentially, that wasn't presented before. And that was a conversation that, that, that was, that was presented to us as a result of the request of the first 300 units on, of housing to be developed up the street, of whether to postpone any affordable units, and that's where we saw the opportunity to, to move forward the deeply affordable component of the project at the forefront, instead of having it in the rearview mirror, and delayed, and delayed, and delayed. So, getting down to your, to your point about the, so we, part of our data that we're getting together is an engineering plan for this, to identify exactly what we are talking about here as a parcel. And, and, because to your point, the complications of, between the library and the senior center and the parks and rec areas, we want to make sure that we have a defined area. The last thing you talked about was 40 cars. So, the demographics that we're referring to, the, the population, that, you know, there is, there is very strong indication, and in fact, that we are, we are talking about seniors in the 30 to 60% area median income. The, the, there is, the, the potential of having 40 cars here, even to half that amount, is, is extremely, extremely unlikely. And as, as Judy Barrett, our, our expert, you know, the expert within, within, with Barrett Planning, she's identified, and she's, you know, to the point of absolutely, it's, it's gonna be, you're not gonna have 40 cars. You're not gonna have, so it's gonna be minimal.
So, I, I think for the purposes of this meeting, is, these are all good points, but they're forward from this particular.
Well, I think, there, a lot of those are also gonna come up at town meeting, because people are gonna have similar questions.
It's true.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir, absolutely.
And that's, that's totally true, and that's, Mr. Dugan is gonna.
And that's, and we want to be able to make sure that we present.
Yeah.
To the chairs, you know, and share the data as we are working, teams working internally to make sure we have all the necessary information. This is great feedback, and we appreciate this, because this is, continues on our, on our checklist of, of to-dos, but we are, all the points that you brought up, we are even the.
Yeah, and I apologize if my tone of voice isn't.
Don't apologize, it's all good.
These are all just, you know, I, I have a bullet list of facts that I will go through, make sure that get addressed.
So, I, I would like.
I actually have a question.
Oh, sure.
Oh, cause I'm monopolizing.
You took a little bit of time.
I yield the floor.
Thank you. So, my question, I want to be very clear. So, when we're saying that there will be an RFP put out, the RFP will ask for deeply affordable housing and to move town hall somewhere else, it will be both?
It will have both of those components to it.
Okay.
Yes, and, and also a component that the town will be able to remain here as a tenant until they're ready to.
Move.
Actually start applying for, you know, there's gonna be a, a period of time where they're, where they're getting their ducks in a row and, and actually getting, applied for tax credits and whatnot. And so, if they can't be actively working on the project, then town will remain in, in, in town hall as tenants, for free.
So, I, I would ask, any, Bartlet?
Well, that lays out a time problem to me. I mean, we're talking three or four years of stuff, and, you know, we have to have a town hall that's ready to move into, but to vacate this building. So there's a, I think there's a time issue there. I agree with Darrell on a lot of these other issues, and I, I also question that this is writing an RFP, which is open to the public, but it's designed so that only one person is realistically gonna qualify.
It's, not necess, not necessarily, if there is another, if there is, if there is another property owner that has the necessary, you know, is willing to do the same thing, that more than happy to, to submit. I mean, General Counsel is working on that, and I have 100% faith in General Counsel that, of, of that this is something that is appropriate.
I, I would submit that even the details of the RFP are not part of what we want to do tonight.
No.
I think we should all be interested in them as we go forward, absolutely. But we simply want to, notice our intent to go forward with really achieving something we've talked about for a long time, was, which is deeply affordable senior housing.
Well, I'm, no, I'm in favor of voting to make this building surplus at some point, I think that's a great idea.
Would you, would you make a motion?
I'm very concerned about the timing of getting, getting the units.
Of course, but that's, we're not talking about those details.
But, as a first step, I will make a motion that we, that we vote to declare this building surplus.
I think that's a good way to put it, first step.
How's that gonna add?
Darrell?
You can't declare the building surplus, you could say you can.
No, 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 we can't, we're, we're just, we're just affirming.
You, you need to have a motion to support.
I believe that's what we did.
All right, that's certainly what I intended.
That's what the intent was, yeah.
So, I am, I am okay supporting the intent to declare this building surplus for the purposes of creating an RFP to, for deeply affordable housing, but I, it ends at that point.
Sure, that's, that's all that it's here for, because we don't know what these details.
Yeah, no, that, that's what I mean, and, and, you know, I, I still, one, sorry, I meant to just, but I think the other part is, I think town meeting is gonna ask, how are you, how is this building surplus, given that it's occupied and you don't have space to move to, it's, you know, it's not an empty building, so people are gonna have a hard time with the concept, I have the hard time with the concept that it's surplus when we need it. You know, so, again, I think that's something you're gonna have to make sure that you clearly address at town meeting.
Yes, sir.
There, because I think it just raises a lot of questions. If this building was empty, this would be a.
It's, it's, it's a legalistic.
I know, but.
And it's very good to hear what the concerns are and the information.
Yeah, because there's a lot of people in town that are gonna go.
And, and I would address your concern about, you know, the one developer thing, that if we weren't, if Mr. Dugan and town, the town was not upfront about that, then everyone would be making up stories, and, you know, so it's.
But like I said, I'm, I'm good with what we, we just agreed.
Anna.
So, I have to wear multiple hats on this particular whole issue. So, tonight, wearing my planning board hat, I have a lot of concerns about a project that is very thin on details, and so from that perspective, I need to abstain.
I support it.
I, it's the first step.
And I'm sort of astonished at that, but I support.
It's the first step, it was, we, when we had a joint meeting with the selectmen six, seven years ago to discuss 550.
It was actually four years ago, it was in 2021.
Okay, whenever it was, four years ago. The first step that we all talked about back then was declaring this property surplus in order to get to the next step. That's all we're doing. We're not saying it works, we're not saying who's gonna get it, it's just declaring that it's, the state says we have to declare it surplus in order to put an RFP out. That's first step, and I agree with it, and I'm supporting it.
Well, fine, so.
And if we have more questions that gets answered?
They'll answer it before it goes to town meeting vote.
I think.
Right, this has been an incredibly rushed process.
I'm gonna, maybe, sorry to interrupt your time there, Anna, I, I think I understand where you're coming from here, but I think I'm making the point is, we're, we're only discussing declaring this parcel surplus, we're not discussing approval of any project on this parcel.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because that's a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, why not even?
And, and I think you may have.
And I don't wanna make sure that, and I think in support of Anna here, that we're not implying that we are endorsing any future project on it at this point.
So, the other aspect of this surplus issue is, an RFP cannot be issued.
Yeah, and, and.
So, this is just.
I know the technicalities of, of that.
Well, but that's.
But that, I, what I'm saying is, is my approval for surplus does not mean I endorse the project.
Absolutely, that we're not, we're not proposing anything else. There's no proposal before us. We don't know what the RFP is, we don't know who the bidders are gonna be, we don't, we just don't know, and as it's been described to me at some point, there's a lot of moving parts, and they're, and they're continuing to move.
I'm putting it in our public record, because I don't want to be quoted, that the planning board supports the proposal, because we're not at that stage. We're only supporting declaring the project.
But Darrell, I wanna, I don't wanna go round and round with you, but there is no proposal. There is no proposal. There's a vague outline of something.
And that's my concern.
And I'm not endorsing that, I'm endorsing declaring this property surplus.
So, did everybody have an opportunity to vote?
Yes. And we have four votes, aye, and one abstain.
Abstain, thank you.
Chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you. Thank you.
That is correct, thank you.
Okay, um, next, we have not even gotten out of board business.
Do we want to wait till the end for that?
No, well, I think we've covered everything, unless there's any board business that we haven't covered.
The, the one staff update was, just to share, that the Westford planning board has their first application under their MBTA community zoning bylaw, and that's off of Powers Road. Cooper developed a memo just to share that information with you, it was linked to the.
Is that the sand and gravel place that's the? I looked at the map.
Is that the old farmhouse that they knocked down right before the ski area? It looks like, I think that's.
Or is that, or is that a different one?
It's a little further down the road from the ski area, it's much closer to Concord Road, so, but the.
Maybe it's not that one, but that one.
Yeah.
He included a map in the memo too.
Yeah, it looked like it was the sand and gravel place, but I couldn't quite slide up and down the, the map there to see.
And, that we also have in our proposed agenda, a public input. Is there any input from the public on any non-agendated item? If not, we'll go forward. With the continued public hearing for 550 Newtown Road, the applicant has submitted a formal request to withdraw the application. We will vote tonight on to accept this request without prejudice. Do we have any comments?
Nope, I'm good.
So, I'll first, I'll close the continued public hearing.
So first, first we'll close the hearing. Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the public hearing is closed, can I have a motion to accept the formal request to withdraw the application without prejudice?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item, 100 Taylor Street Site Plan Amendment. Is there anyone here to talk about this? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert Melvin with Stamsky McNary for the record. I will be representing the applicant on a site plan for 100 Taylor Street. 100 Taylor Street is a contracting yard with three existing one-story buildings, and it contains a fill and gravel storage area with bordering vegetated wetlands at the back of the site to the south, which project 100-foot buffer zone onto the property. Today, we're here to propose an addition to the one-story building that's centered on the screen there. The addition would be extension of the garage that's in the current structure, and would allow two, a two-door garage in that area. The, the addition is proposed on top of an existing, what we're calling reclaimed bitumous concrete. This is an impervious surface, it's not paved, it's, it's really just kind of a mixture of kind of compacted stone dust and gravel, so it is an impervious surface. So the, the addition is being proposed on an existing impervious surface here. We have heard back from various town departments, and I don't believe we have any major concerns. We did hear from the building commissioner this week, requesting a plot plan for the property, and I believe that just about covers it, I'll take any questions here.
The railroad tracks away in the back, correct?
Uh, yes, you can see to the east, there's the Boston and Main Railroad there.
So this was the old, so, nobody's here is gonna know that, but it was the old.
I didn't know there was a bowling pin manufacturing place.
No, it wasn't a bowling pin, this was the old New England hardwood place, it was, you could go there and buy oak and all the hardwoods.
I bought flooring from there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, but, and there was probably a building up there at one time where you could go in and pick out all the old oak and everything else like that, so this is just a little more formalized of what used to be out there, 100 year.
So, with the, Henry, when you request a plot plan, you mean a complete, because we have a plan here, but it does not show the complete extents of the plot, or what's the issue?
Uh, well, this, this plan we presented today is not a formal plot plan, a plot plan would include zoning setbacks, and, yeah, exactly.
And presumably, the driveway continues to Taylor Street.
Yes, he has, Mr. Carroll has access. There is a separate parcel to which he owns, but it's not included in this. That, that driveway actually continues down toward Taylor Street, yeah.
Are you asking for any waivers?
Uh, nope, no waivers. No waivers requested.
I have two things. One, one's a comment and one's a question because I'm just not familiar with certain things. So the building puts into the driveway, which seems odd there, given that, that doesn't look right.
Right. Well, there's no plans to repave the driveway. And like I said, the, the surface there is all rendered impervious, compacted gravel. So there really wouldn't be any issue with, you know, maneuvering around that structure.
But you show, I guess part of it, and maybe it goes back to a plot planning, a full engineering drawing, but you're showing a building into the driveway, what's designated as the driveway. I just think that that's, needs to be corrected. And maybe it's just moving your driveway on that drawing or something, but I can't see how I could approve a building that takes up half the driveway, especially when it's around for the back access there.
I think you maybe should visit the site because.
I'm just looking at the drawing that's been presented to us, and that, that needs to be corrected.
If you went down the driveway and wanted to take a left into that big yellow area, you could just turn and go in. It was, it's a wide open parking lot.
It depends on that side, but it's also, but it's what accesses the backside of the building.
Right, but if you see here, that, that yellow oranges portion actually is on the downside of the driveway there too. So if you, if you were on the site and you looked the, the pavement and the compacted area is, you know, it's very difficult to distinguish between the two. It's, it's pretty much all drivable area. He has construction vehicles that, you know, throughout the site.
I've seen it, but again, I'm just looking at what the drawing is showing me here. And I just recommend you fix the drawing so the driveway doesn't go through the building there. The other part, and it's more of a, because I'm new at understanding all of the regulations. So when, when we do modifications to a site that has impervious, and they're gonna do improvements to it, is there any expectation or requirements to address some of the impervious percentage there? So I know it's on, currently on impervious pieces here, but it's an improvement to the site, but there's no improvement to the impervious percentage on the site there. Is there anything in our requirements relative to that?
Okay, so the way I was thinking about it is that there's no change proposed in the impervious cover on the site. So no trigger for a special permit.
It's less than the threshold still, is what you mean.
How big of a building do they, could they add before it would trigger us to reevaluate the impervious on the site? And this is, sorry, this is not to you. This is more of it. I wanna make sure I understand the technicalities of.
If, if the bill, if the, the addition of the building was in an area that was not impervious, then it would trigger it.
If it was over, what, minimum twenty-five hundred square feet, if I remember right?
I can't recall, but there, there are certain thresholds that could, could hit. There are multiple here.
This application didn't trigger any of the, didn't hit any of the triggers.
Could you just shoot me some background material on where that stuff is documented so I could just educate myself?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Russ.
And those are my only few comments on, on the plan.
Anna.
If we follow the staff recommendations around making sure that an updated site plan is provided with the square footage of the proposed addition and driveway access to site to be shown on the plan, as well as the comments from Light Water and Building, I, I'm good.
Okay. Bartlett?
Yeah, what Anna said, and I would like to know which side the doors are on. You said that we had a garage door or two garage doors?
Yeah, so on this plan, the, the garage doors would be on the north face of that addition. That's currently where the existing garage door is as well.
So, so you're saying that vehicles can drive anywhere in that yellow area?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Mark?
I'm good.
I have no comment.
What kind of motion do you need?
Well, if we have a motion tonight, which I think we could, we need to condition it with some of the comments that we've already had. So.
We had a draft decision. Did I remember to ask you to post it?
Just posted.
Yeah, so there is a draft decision.
And what were the conditions? Can they be read?
Yep. So all comments, all comments from the light department, water department, and building department for the site plan app, this application must be resolved to the planning board's satisfaction prior to issuance of building permit and may include additional specific items from the light department, water department, and building department as same as written on the cover sheet. So which, which were the?
Which is what Anna mentioned.
Exactly.
Right, as well as the square footage and driveway access being noted on the plan correctly.
Can I hear a motion to? First of all, can I hear a motion to close the hearing?
It's not a hearing, it's.
It's a site plan amendment, sorry. Can I hear a motion to provide a decision that we've just discussed with the conditions we just discussed for this property? I didn't word that very well.
I'll make a motion to, per the draft decision recommendations from staff, that was previously read with the additional two comments of the.
Square footage.
The square footage of the building and driveway access to the plan shown. So that would be conditions D and E.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Darrell?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
Bartlett?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And Henry, it's convenient you're here, so you know what the conditions are when. Okay, next. Public here, we are going to open a public hearing for a Water Resource District Special Permit, Site Plan Amendment, and Stormwater Permit at 55 Russell Street for new tennis courts at the Littleton Middle School. And we have some people here. Who do we have here?
So I'll do the hearing notice first. The Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March 13, 2025, at 7:00 PM in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Offices at 37 Shattuck Street to consider a Water Resource District Special Permit Application under Chapter 173, Article 24, Oakford Water Resource District of the Code of Town of Littleton. Plus, we realized later that it's also requires a stormwater permit. So that asks you that get rolled into this discussion as well. The property is 55 Russell Street, assessors map U-19-21. Owner, Town of Littleton School Department. Applicants, Town of Littleton in care of Tim Michalski and agents from Activitas Inc. The applicant is requesting approvals for new tennis courts at the middle school and Wickham Baseball Field improvements at 55 Russell Street. Application can be viewed online at the planning board page of the town website, at littletonma.org, or at the planning board and town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed work should provide written comment to the planning board office, my email address by March 10th if possible, or attend the public hearing. Please feel free to call the planning board office or email me with any questions.
Okay. Introduce yourself and give us your, your, Tim?
I am Tim.
Okay.
So good evening, members of the board, and Moran and Cooper, and thank you for having us this evening to discuss this project and site plan amendments. As Moran mentioned, we have Holly Gansler and Megan Donahue from Activitas with us tonight, as well as Director Alicia Day and Saul Marini from the Park Commission. This project, just to give you a brief history, has been going around town for quite a while. It first came before the select board and the town in its current phase, 2022, and there were 18 locations across town that were looked at to find where the new home of the tennis courts were going to be. A large portion of this is because the tennis courts on this site here were deleted for the built, for the construction of the senior center. During that process, it was narrowed down to one property, and through the design process, the cost of that project made it prohibitive to continue that. We went back to the drawing board, looked at additional five sites, and it was decided at the time that the existing high school tennis courts would be renovated. That was taken to town meeting. It was approved by boards, and the monies to do the project at the time were authorized. In the process of that as well, just because of the slope that existed at the, at the high school site and kind of going into that Indian Hill parking lot space, there was going to need to be additional engineering and other things in order to build that particular court out in order to make it the four courts that we were looking for. In this process, the sewer project had began, begun, and we started, we had the high school fields offline for a considerable amount of time. We had issues with our youth sports and where we were putting them, and we went back to the drawing board and really looked at how we could fix a lot of the problems and additional capital improvements for less money than what we had looked at. In doing so, the varsity baseball team and all 90-foot baseball in Town of Littleton had been displaced for a considerable amount of time and has been playing on Wickham Field because of the project. With the completion of Jet Field back when Alumni was built, the high school varsity team had already moved down to the Russell Street site. So in looking at that, we were able to, when the high school fields came back online, move all of our green space up to the high school by not utilizing the two, the baseball field and the softball field up there. And piloting that last year, we were extremely successful, and we got a lot of positive feedback from the youth sports. This plan was developed as what we were then able to see as our, where our open space and our usages were going to be. And the middle school site, the field that is directly adjacent to the middle school driveway was selected for the tennis courts. In doing the design, we were able to keep a full-size 7v7 field there. Traditionally, just so everybody knows, the middle school field has been used for everything from football practice to our youngest lacrosse players. Typically, it is used for youth soccer as well, but it's kind of a catch-all. It's also used by the middle school PE teacher. So in doing so, we were able to resurface the tennis courts at the high school. And then, since that is a two-pack, they essentially replaced what we had here. We're moving down there so they just become kind of the rec courts in town. Accomplishes a couple goals that we were chasing. So that's the history. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Holly. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Holly Gansler with Activitas. Cooper, can we go to the next? So just to give an overview of the site and give you a visual to what Tim just described, the baseball site is located on your page north here. It's an existing baseball field now. What we will be proposing here is just some upgrades to the baseball field. The tennis site, as Tim described, is just adjacent in that open grass space of the middle school driveway. So I'm gonna dive into baseball first, and then we'll move into the proposed tennis project. So just a zoom in of, of the existing conditions of that area. As you can see, it's a baseball diamond now. There is some spectator seating with bleachers and some informal team benches there as well. There's also an existing 20-foot backstop, which is not doing a good enough job capturing those balls that are going into that parking area that you can see at the bottom of that image. So what we are proposing to do at the baseball site, I wonder if we can go to the next one, is namely putting up a new backstop. It'll be a 40-foot-high tension netting system. So it'll be netting with an eight-foot-high chain link fence at the bottom of that. And that eight-foot chain link fence is really to catch kind of the quicker balls that are firing off. And then the netting is to catch those, those higher foul balls. Additional improvements will be formalizing those team areas, putting a, a structure in there that's an open air structure, but just will have a roof protect the athletes from, give them a little shade and in case there's a rain delay, somewhere they can go. Also, formalizing just with some concrete areas to put the existing bleachers back there, some areas for storage, and then some areas for bullpens for the pitchers to warm up as well as batting cages, and those will be the same, the same areas. With this as well, we'll be putting in ADA access. Right now, there is no ADA accessibility down to this facility. So with that, we will be paving two ADA access routes from the parking areas. You can kind of see that on the bottom of the page here, where those pathways come into, come into the baseball field. Additionally, we'll be putting in an outfield fence. There is not an outfield fence there now, so home runs aren't really that kind of grand slam isn't really achievable now. So we'll be putting in a four-foot-high fence in the outfield area so that those athletes can get that true over-the-fence homerun when they, when they get that big hit. And then with that, just to provide a little bit of a buffer so that those outfielders can, can know when they're getting close to the, to the fence is just a warning track, which is just that kind of same material that the infield will be. We're not proposing any changes to the infield. The grades out out here will remain largely the same with the exception of just the grading we need to do to bring those walkways into, into the areas for the spectators and the team. But other than that, pretty minor improvements, just making this more of the, of a facility for the, for the teams that will be playing here since they have now relocated to that spot. As far as stormwater, because we are here before you for a stormwater permit as well, as you can see, this site is largely grass now. It will remain largely grass. We are proposing some increase in impervious, but the runoff should be able to infiltrate as it's moving across the, the field area without needing to put any sort of extra stormwater. Best management practices are stormwaterage management features here. So it will be allowed to just run off and continue before it gets to the, the river and the stream that you see on your page, right, or off the property. So we're proposing any stormwater best management practices here because the water will be, be able to continue to do what it is now. So I can pause here, and we can ask questions about baseball, or we can move on to tennis, whatever you guys prefer.
I prefer just to address them as we go along. Couple of things. I'm glad I see, I had brought up when I was on school committee, and I'm glad it's finally getting addressed, is, is, is that there's no way to really, there's no handicap access from the parking lots down to those fields. However, there is one other gate about halfway up that, you know, up that side. I would like to see that that be included in the project and upgraded.
So we had discussed that, and just by where that gate opening is, there is no crosswalk or anything. So just in discussing with the school, we thought it would make the most sense to put it just right at where the crosswalk is and actually try to eliminate that entrance and the fence from.
It should be addressed because either fix it or remove it, but I don't think leaving it in its current state is acceptable, given that there's much work is being done on the site there. The lights, I think the lights, you're not having lights.
No lights here, no, no.
So I'll save that one for the tennis courts there. Again, I think it would be nice where that, I can't read, but it's the gray area over, on top of the green, where it's currently a mix of rock and unkept lawn at this point. It'd be nice to, again, just fix all of the grading and the lawn, not just the, the little slivers that you have identified there on it. And then the last one, because you mentioned it was gonna be a four-foot chain link fence, I assume you'll have some kind of cover on the top of it because that would, I notice all of the chain link fences now have covers over them so you don't impale yourself on them.
So that is, yep, standard practice is that the outfield fence will have that fence caps just in case someone's reaching for a, a ball and trying to catch it. They won't land, there'll be a cap on that.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so like I said, it would be nice if you addressed the, that other access point and the grading and grass in that, in that other area, since now's the time to do it when you do the rest of the project.
So in the area that you are referring.
So in the area that you are referring to, that is one of the sites that we're looking to spread material from the tennis court project, because we will be removing material, and that was one of the places that we've discussed with the highway department doing screening of that material and either stockpiling it over there for now, but eventually utilizing it to spread, depending on when the project gets done and when we want to have the field begin being utilized. So we have a couple of different options for that.
Again, I would like to see it formally as part of the project to fix that area so it's just not left unkept like it is today.
Understood.
That was all that I had for baseball.
Process question, so both of the applications. So on this one, the application is lists, I believe, Justin McCarthy as the owner, but it's not signed. And so then also on the tennis court one, he's listed and signed. So is that typical for the chair of school committee to act as owner? Or wouldn't that be town administrator or...?
So we do have the signed application, that was, came in later than the initial one did. This part of the parcel is under the control of the school department, so it seemed appropriate to have the chair of the school committee.
So I meant to ask, on page nine of the application, which says identify the uses proposed in special permit application, self-storage facility is checked, the truck terminal is checked. Is this a form issue or what? I don't understand why all these boxes are checked. That manufacturer use to transport toxic materials, check. And I don't think these are all supposed to be checked, are they?
So we asked the applicant to provide a checklist when they submitted. If you would also like a copy of a blank checklist to use as you go through these steps.
Sounds like what you're saying is the applicant checks those.
It's checked.
If it is, that must have been an error in the submission uploading, because I believe my copy does not have those checked and they should not be checked.
The copy on the website has got almost every box checked under this, under the... There's several empty ones, like sewage flow of less than fifteen thousand gallons is unchecked, which makes sense. But, so it's not like a blanket checking on the things here. So I think somebody needs to go through and see what's wrong with our, either the form or the application.
Okay, we'll double-check that we uploaded the same word that was sent.
And if that was an error, we can certainly fix that because those shouldn't be checked.
I missed that in my comment, sorry Anna to interrupt you.
That's okay, so it sounds like there was a follow-up document that was sent where it was signed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My only question is, have you, are you, do you have to go in front of Conservation Commission? Because you're so close to wetlands, are you in filling and changing the contours?
No, so on baseball, like I mentioned, where we're proposing the filling, that is far enough away that we are out of the jurisdiction of conservation, and we did have a pre-application meeting with both planning and conservation where they confirmed we did not need to file for this project.
Martha?
I'm good.
And to let you know, we did send it out for a drainage review estimate. We have the estimate back and the process, the funding to get that paid for. Green has provided an estimate of a date of March twenty-first to have all their comments back to us.
For both projects or just this one?
For, thank you for asking, for both the, this baseball field and the tennis.
Okay. Okay, can we go to the tennis courts?
So these are just a few images of what that netting system would look like, as well as just some example images of what that team structure would look like. We can pause on these for just a few, in case anyone has additional questions after looking at the photos.
Okay.
Moving on to tennis. So just again, a zoomed-in image of that area that we're proposing to put the tennis courts. As Tim mentioned, it's currently being used by the middle school for gym classes. It's being used for youth soccer, youth lacrosse. So this is being actively used as an athletic venue currently. So what we're proposing to put in is four new tennis courts. And so we're placing those adjacent to the street outside of that. I believe it's a twenty-five foot, I can't read that from this far either. Out of the setback of the street setback, and you'll see we're well out of the side yard setback here as well. And we are providing some space leftover for that seven versus seven soccer. So the younger children's soccer has some space to use there, as well as the middle school can continue to use that open grass space for their gym classes as well. So there will be ten-foot-high netting on both your page north and page, not netting, excuse me, chain link fencing on your page north and page south, and that will wrap around the corners on east and west, but then we will drop that down to four-foot-high fencing on the end line or on the sidelines. And that allows for any spectators just to see through a little bit easier, and if they really want to lean on that fence to watch. We are providing ADA accessibility from the sidewalk down your right side and then along the top there. And that is the accessibility, and those are the only pathways that we are providing there. As you'll see on the bottom of the page there, the area indicated for infiltration and detention. So in order, we are converting this to an impervious area that was previously grass. So to account for that change in runoff, we will be capturing this, the runoff from the courts and diverting it into this infiltration-detention basin where it'll be given the opportunity to infiltrate before it, anything that does not infiltrate will then be piped into the street drainage, and that's what we're proposing is in the street drainage. And all of those rates will be below the existing conditions that we see out here. So that detention basin will be acting also as a, detaining the stormwater from leaving the site and slowing it down before it leaves the site. So that line of arborvitus that you see there, that right along the property line, that will be remaining, weren't proposing to take down any of those trees. This project is not proposing any lighting, no new lighting here either. And actually, the three lights that are there now, that are just lighting the grass area, those will be coming down as a part of this project as well. So open it up to questions.
I think you addressed the drainage concern, making sure that that water doesn't run into the neighbors there. So I think I'm all set. Anna?
He'll comment.
Arla?
I'm good, thanks.
Mark?
I have one comment, why no pickleball?
So the pickleball is going to be kept down at the Indian Hill site. Generally pickleball, and if anybody watches the news, it's very noisy and very contentious when it comes to the sounds that come with that. So we will be keeping that off that site.
So yeah, proposing pickleball.
We have pickleball lines on the existing high school courts, and just like here at Town Hall was the only place pickleball was played, we've, in our conversations and our pre-meetings, that was something that was requested by the schools, and we just felt because of the climate around pickleball, that was the best thing to do. You know, at the high school site, there's Indian Hill there, there's the high school site, and then there's the main road. So if there's, you know, the annoying pickleball sound, that's the place to keep it.
Seniors get really loud when they play pickleball, is that what it is?
For sure.
It's the sound of the ball coming off the paddles. It's a very unique sound if you've never heard it, and it's a, yeah.
Well, no, because that's good, because again, there's neighbors right on the other side there, that that would not, not really be a neighborly thing to do to them.
So just so everybody, it was also asked of us by the school committee, these courts will be available to the public only during non-school hours. So weekends and after school is closed, it'll be the same structure as all the other space. Schools will have access to them first, priority, recreation, and then in-town teams, whatever we might have. But as far as public entryway, just having public and kids and stuff like that, we are going to have signage and everything to that end.
Anyone in the audience have questions? Mr. DeCoste?
Chuck DeCoste, six oh nine Newtown Road. Appreciate the engineers as well as Tim Militia for taking pickleball off of this plan, because I believe initially it was, talked about at least, and removing those because those families, actually, one of the residences right next to me, I've heard from a couple of residents on that Little Russell Street extension with regard to noise and lights. Both of those being removed, most of their concerns are addressed, but there are some other concerns that residents down there have relative to, great that the arborvitus is staying, but there's still going to be, there's currently kids that come through those arborvitus into backyards. And is there any consideration for fencing along the arborvitus to separate the residential from the town property?
So currently, as it says, there's not. The arborvitus line, in my time here, has existed. There's never been any additional barrier requested. As far as usage goes, we haven't really received any complaints up until, as far as you mentioning it now, it's just that kids go over there. I don't, that was the first time that I've ever kind of heard, like, hey, we have kids in the backyard over here?
Shayla Centigal, I live at thirty-one Russell Street. There is never really kids in our yard, it's always just the occasional ball that goes over the fence where people are grabbing it, you know what I mean? But we're concerned to the fences because we have dogs, and we always let our dogs out without leashes because they're trained to do that. And we fear that it's, we know that there's going to be fences around the tennis courts, and that was proposed, but maybe something around the soccer court where, like, I'm not sure. But it's, we're just concerned about people potentially, like, balls or people coming into our yard, or the dogs going over there. I just think that there should be a little bit more security for the neighbors, because, I mean, my house is literally in that proposition right there.
Yeah, the plan shows that house.
It's, yeah, I'm literally in it, so I think that's just a little bit of our concerns.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I think the reality is that with us being able to move a lot of the soccer up to the high school, the reality of the usage of that for the youth sports, I think, would be extremely limited in the future. The most you're probably going to see would probably be the PE teacher at the middle school.
Okay, Chuck?
Just to clarify, as far as the kids going to, I mean, I've coached sports on that field for a number of years, and I've seen kids from out of town lacrosse or whatever use those bushes as a restroom.
Oh, we do have bathrooms now.
Well, there is, yeah, there's the porta-potties that are put right on the sidewalk, but if they're on the opposite sideline, it's not the least resistance for young boys. So that's, that would be a concern. The fence would be something that, and I've spoken with Shayla's parents, and that is something that they, they don't have liability.
So to be clear, you're talking about a fence at the rear where the playing field will remain. I mean, it's assuming there's going to be fencing around the tennis courts.
Tennis courts for sure.
Tennis courts.
Yeah, I would say at least to, as far as the tennis courts, but probably a little further down. The arborvitus do get more dense as you go towards Russell Street from the soccer field. Just the point about, I mean, there's, the traffic that's going to be there is not going to be, like, there's not going to be coaches there, there's not, in all cases. There's going to be a lot of people using these courts independently. Now hopefully, the people that are using these courts will see the big orange porta-potty and use it. But I just think that that extra precautionary measure is a small expense to assuage some concerns.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you. Mark?
Mark Rambacher, two oh five Hartwell. If these tennis courts aren't available for use by the public during the day, where is the public supposed to play tennis during the day?
At the high school.
So we're allowed to play at one school but not the other school? How is that going to be publicized and made known?
We're going to have signage up, and it's something that, when we initially proposed the project, that we had discussed at the school committee meeting. And then when we did our kickoff meeting, we had discussed what the usages were going to be when we had all the representatives from the school there as well.
Okay, so now the tennis courts are going to be competing with the pickleball courts, effectively, right?
So that has always been the way that it was, so this project, the...
No, it wasn't, because there was pickleball here and there's tennis at the high school, but now there's pickleball and tennis at the high school, right? So we've now eliminated it.
No, so there was pickleball and tennis here, and to just break them up, these were the rec courts, pickleball, tennis. And the high school was just two tennis courts. Now we have two courts, if you took these and said, hey, these are now the high school, that's just pickleball and tennis. And then the other tennis courts are existing at the middle school.
But before, those courts weren't restricted, I could use any of the courts any of the time of the day. And now these courts aren't available. So now during the day, we have fewer available tennis courts than we used to have.
And I think that that would be a conversation with the school committee. That was one of the things that they asked.
Part of the rationale there is that the high school courts will be accessible from the thirty-six King Street parking lot, not from the school property.
Right, but we don't restrict other uses, I mean, the track isn't restricted to use during this day. Why are we allowing the school committee to restrict this use, right? We built this with community funds for the community, and then the school's telling us we can't use them?
I mean, the reason this comes up is it's a safety protocol for the schools. So at the end of the day, like Tim had said, I think that this is a conversation with the school committee.
I believe, I believe in the initial conversation, why this was different from other parcels, including Alumni Field, this is kind of like this, because this is where the middle school does gym.
But we can use the track during the day when the Russell Street kids use it during gym, so it's not any different, and they're younger kids, so...
And I can't speak to what the, any more than that that was something that was brought up in the conversation.
Okay, yes.
I just have one more thing regarding the hours of operation for residents who are non-school-related. Is there going to be a limit of hours or a time cap where we can stop, like, using the facilities? Because, I mean...
Right, so there's not going to be lights on the facility, and typically park, it's dawn to dusk. So that's typically what we've encouraged in all of our park facilities.
Okay, is there going to be a rule that states that, like? Yeah.
There's signage at most of the facilities that say dawn to dusk.
Okay.
So from the planning board point of view, we will have a peer review for the drainage in a week or two. So can we continue this hearing to our next meeting, which is?
Thursday, April third. And I would recommend putting this up near the beginning of the evening.
I totally agree, if not first. And, you know, I'm interested in this issue between the schools, the parks, et cetera. But I'm not sure, apparently we are the public hearing, but I'm not sure that it's the thing for us to go into at this, for what we're here to do, however, and, you know, to select one. And that may be the better forum. However, the other thing is, I take under advisement the neighbors' concerns. That's what these hearings are for.
Can I weigh in on this?
Sure.
Off, kind of off the cuff, I guess is the best way to put it. As far as the use of the tennis courts, I agree with Mr. Rambacher that they should be used for the public. And the reason I... And the reason I'm weighing in, I was because I donated $200,000 to the town of Littleton to replace the tennis courts. I'm assuming that that's the money they're using to build these tennis courts.
No, they're using the guy at the high school. Am I wrong in that?
No. I believe you're correct.
Okay.
So I would like to see this public course allowed for not, I understand about the students, but students aren't going to be using them in the middle of the day because they're in classes. You don't have tennis court, tennis lessons in the middle of the day.
They do have PE classes.
PE is one thing, but not tennis, you know what I mean? Unless, anyway, my point is that I, I made a point to donate the money to have these built, and I'd like to see them for public use.
Absolutely. And like I said, this, this here was for the permitting, and we can absolutely have that, that conversation with the school department.
I just want to make my point, though, and that's all publicly.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Evan, Ben on the school committee, and the, I actually don't even know what the status of the MLA between school committee, park and rec, and the select board relative to use of facilities that is under control of the school committee. And I think that this, that discussion needs to be bounced to the school committee and negotiated there. Because I, I see both sides of those arguments there, and, and I think we should stay out of that.
Okay. So thank you all for who was here for this issue.
So we continue, do you want, you want a date?
Yeah, April...
Thursday, April 3rd, at 6:45 PM in this room.
Okay. So anyone wants to follow through? Can be here for that. Next is the, we're opening a public hearing.
No, site plan only.
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, we have, I'm, I'm sorry, we skipped over the lights at Jet Field, which is a site plan only review. We have a lot of supporting material on that. Is there anyone here for that issue?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Are you from the light?
So, good evening. I'm Dave McManus. I am the president of Littleton Youth Baseball and Softball Association. We are the sponsors of this project. And so in short, what we are looking to do is put a set of lights onto Jet Field. So Jet Field is there located down at the middle school, Russell Street Elementary School complex, right there adjacent to Alumni. Was recently renovated, as you might know, in 2018. And it is currently the primary softball field for all youth softball programs, including the high school. And so what we as a 501(c)(3) are looking to do is pay for the full cost of the equipment and the installation of lights on that field. We would ideally do this in the month of July after school has gotten out, so minimize the disruption there at the school committee, on the school site. And after the completion of the project, we would be gifting the lights to LPS, as the owners of the project, or the owners of the property, rather. So we presented this project, I did, to the school committee back on February 27th. They approved and accepted it, and so we are now here before you. I did include and provide a number of materials, so I won't go through an entire presentation, but I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
I, I enjoyed your, the lighting suppliers simulations, et cetera. Well, you're, you're here primarily to allow anyone who has comments on this to speak up. In general, there's really not much here for us to, you know, weigh in on. So I'm going to, well, first of all, let's go around our...
I didn't see drawings of, I see the application, but I didn't see drawings in the, in the links on the website to see where, where you're talking. I, I mean, I know where the field is, but I didn't know what the lighting plan was.
So if this was a part of...
Right, so at the very bottom of the page for 55 Russell Street, that's where the Jet Field information is linked.
If I found it, it must be there.
And the, it's something like the lighting analysis plan is, is what's being shared?
Oh, under the 55 Russell Street, not, not the two other links that are on the thing. All right, I apologize, I missed that.
Anna, you can, you can comment on this?
No.
Bartlett? Mark? Anyone, anyone in the audience? Yes?
Hello, my name is Christine Zende. I live at 336 King Street in Littleton. And I'm the father. And I'm concerned, I, I looked at your materials online, the, the lighting company that's going to do this, it seemed very, you know, very high-tech, very, you know, it's going to, the lights are going to follow the hits and, you know, it just seemed like quite, quite something. I'm concerned that in the materials, it said that this would only be on four hours at a time. Is that correct?
So we made an estimate for consideration for the additional operating costs that these lights would generate. And in that estimate, that is likely what you were referring to, which is we put a four-hour window where those lights would be potentially used. That isn't intended to be on every day. It would just be when used. And it is purely an estimate.
Could be more than four hours?
No, I don't believe so, because generally, these are going to be used for games that would be beginning somewhere in the seven o'clock range at the latest. And you're talking about whether it's high school or youth softball, six or seven innings of play. So I, I can't imagine it would be on for more than four hours. We were providing, in our view, a very generous estimate for that cost.
And this would only be during the softball season? And would that be publicized, a starting date and ending date?
So we have a softball season that runs primarily in the spring, which starts in early, mid-April, and runs until basically the beginning of June. The high school has a similar program, those timelines. Youth baseball softball also has a summer program and a fall program. The summer and the fall seasons are much shorter. They're generally only about four to five weeks in duration. But potentially, they could be used during those timeframes, those seasons as well. That's our intent.
So would the summer be during the day? Would they be playing during the day, or is it all evening?
We don't have any evening games currently because there's no lights on the facility.
But there probably would be?
Lights would be used during the day.
Yes, the, the lights would not be used during the day.
Right, I understand that, so that, that's not a problem. But you could extend now into the evening because of that, all the way through the fall?
It, it could. I would say the, the primary intent for these lights is to enable, so, so in the materials, we also gave project rationale, and this is one of the primary drivers for this project. It's because when the high school plays, they generally start around four o'clock. If youth softball has a game after them, the start time scheduled is 6:15, but through no fault of the high school, right, they're shining, we typically start even later. And so it's really intended, again, we don't have a scoped-out schedule to the specifics that unfortunately you're asking about, but our thinking behind this was to extend the use of the field so that if our youth players are playing after the high school teams, then they're able to get a full game minute.
Okay. And in the, in the slideshow by the provider of the lighting system, they said one of the selling points was that the lights don't shine off, off of the field in a way. Is that, you believe that? You've seen that?
I've actually seen.
It's been demonstrated?
Yes. I actually, along with members of the parks and rec department here, attended a demo. These lights back in the fall last year, and 100%. This is a different technology than you envision big field floodlights that you can, you know, generate a lot of light pollution around the field.
Yes.
These lights do not operate in that sort of way at all. They're very specific to the field.
Okay. You know, my boys played Little League, I'm, you know, I'm all about this. I think it's, I love that the kids are playing, it's great. I'm just very concerned about light pollution for people and wildlife, and, you know, just want to voice what I, my concerns. And I'm sure there are other people have those concerns too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to make a, you know, sort of an overall comment about the light pollution. It's come to the fore in many building codes. We have a night sky lighting building code. New buildings are not allowed to have spotlights that, you know, just shine out into the thing. This, and because of that, these technologies are being developed and proposed. I've been to communities in the West where you can drive through them and barely see anything, but yet there's shopping centers all around you. So we, as a planning board, want to encourage that kind of technology use in all projects.
Is there a field in, in Massachusetts that uses this technology that you could see, or?
I, I don't know. Is, where did you see your...
So the, the demo that we viewed was a, it wasn't at a particular field, it was made in a playing field. It was a, it was a demonstration that actually the lighting company set up at an open field. So it wasn't at a specific ball-playing field, but because...
Tim?
Ma'am, I do have a list. We work very closely with Musco on a lot of things. So I do have a list that Mike provided me in my email, and I'd be happy to share with you of some of the, some of the similar projects. I think one of the most current ones that they worked on, I believe, was in Wellesley.
Okay, great.
But yeah, happy to, happy to show you some of the stuff.
Thank you.
But to Mike's point, we did, it was, it was a demo that was set up in a field adjacent to a restaurant, because they did a whole night with different kind of informational sessions about this and educational stuff. So we did go out and view the different things. To Dave's point, they had competitor's lights there as well, so we were able to see four different versions. And if you haven't had a chance, the video that Mr. Yates referred to, that Dave has put up on the website, is absolutely exactly what you see in that video, is we experienced in real life. So it was definitely there.
Thank you.
I, I don't know within our, you know, our zoning, the, sort of the difference between 24-hour security lights and playing lights that while a field is active. And like, we don't have any standardized sort of closing time, you know, you know, like 10 o'clock at night or for these types of special event lit things there. Like, if these, you know, so, because there, I think there's different sets of issues associated with 24-hour lighting versus event lighting. But we also don't have a cap on how late an event lighting could go, do we?
We have it for businesses. I, you're in the situation where, you know, you, you, your games start, sometimes they run long, for whatever reason. But in general, we're not talking beyond 10 o'clock, or, I mean, my daughter's played softball, and I don't remember hanging out really late.
So, so our, our youth games actually have a time cap to them? So most of them don't even get the full six innings lights aside because they can't start an inning after two hours?
I didn't want to impose it specifically on this project, but I was wondering whether we ought to be thinking about whether we do this kind of event lighting piece that says like 10 o'clock. And then that way, it kind of puts, and then if they want beyond 10 o'clock, it becomes like higher scrutiny as to whether we approve it or not.
That's something that should be considered when we have applications. We talked about it recently with the veterinary, you know...
Yes, right, and that was the safety lights. But, you know, I don't want to necessarily propose putting a limit that the light should be off by 10 o'clock.
I, okay.
But, but that, because that's unique to them right now, because I, I would believe we want that to be uniformly applied to any of the lighting projects that are out. But I bring it up mainly for our consideration that we ought to probably see if we want to address that consistently with, you know...
Lighting is always a part of, and, and it usually comes up, we don't have many event spaces, it usually comes up with businesses. Okay, so...
But even like businesses that run an event, you know, separate from, like I said, the safety lighting that you need during 24 hours. I'd like, I'd be very concerned if we were saying that we're approving, you didn't ask, you know, that these lights, games go to 2 o'clock in the morning. That's like, I would start saying, I think we ought to be thinking highly about not doing that, you know?
Okay. Anna?
Just a quick comment. So at first I did think this really was going to affect any residents, so I appreciate the fact that you came and voiced your, your concern. Because even sometimes during planning board meetings, when we leave here, you can see the lights, you know, across the way, and they're really bright. And so I hear that these aren't going to be like that, that these are going to be different. But I would, I would agree that we should put some kind of a limit or figure out how to limit the timeframe, because if somebody really is living close by that is going to be affected by it, we need to take that into consideration.
Okay. Can we talk about this specific site plan? What exactly we are voting on, do we...
So the motion that I recommended was the planning board vote on approving the site plan for lighting at Jet Field as shown on the plans.
Can I have a motion for that?
Second, not second, as it is. It's all...
Second. All in favor, Derek?
Aye.
Okay.
Ayes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so go forward. Light the, light the field.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Thank you.
Zoning bylaw amendment. We're going to open a hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment, marijuana cultivation facilities and odor control bylaws, proposal to amend existing bylaw. Mark, can you read the verbiage?
If you can give me a minute, I'll get there.
Okay, no problem. We've all talked about this many, many times. We have a draft warrant article in front of us. It's important to dispose of it in some form this meeting so that the selectmen can vote to put it on the warrant, because this involves also a vote on the town warrant, on the town election.
Do we know if the selectmen are going to put it?
We don't.
So it's kind of a moot point if they don't put it on.
Well, why don't we approve it and...
Let them figure it out?
Yeah, this is the next step. The following step would be for the select board to vote to include it on the town meeting warrant and to schedule a ballot vote. So that's their, their next...
From our, from our point of view, has always been, we've had a lot of citizen concern, and we owe it to them to bring this forward. And I would hope... concern, and we owe it to them to bring this forward. And I would hope the selectmen would feel the same way.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Littleton Planning Board will hold public hearings on Thursday, March 13th, 2025, starting at 7:30 PM in room 103 of the Chaddick Street Town Offices at 37 Chaddick Street to consider zoning bylaw amendments as outlined below. Number one, 7:30, amend Article 28, Adult Use Marijuana Establishments, to preclude the cultivation of adult-use marijuana in town pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 94G, Section 3, and clarify the special permit odor control slash air quality requirements for medical marijuana treatment centers. And a second public hearing, amend Article 16, Wetlands and Flood Plane Regulations, deleting Section 17372 through 173-6, and replacing with new Sections 173-72 through 173-77 flood plane regulations to reflect updated FEMA flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study, and to remove reference to wetlands, which are covered in Town Code, Chapter 171, Wetlands Protection. The full text of the proposed zoning amendments are in file with the town clerk and planning board offices and can be viewed during their office hours or online at the town website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment should appear at the time and place designated or provide written comment by March 11th if possible. Please contact the planning board office, phone number, or email with any questions. Signed, Daryl K. Baker, Clerk.
So we're going, we have two different hearings. The first, as we've talked about, is the marijuana. The second is the wetlands and flood plane bylaw. So-
And Town Council, Evria Fried, is available.
Okay. Evria, can you, in a few sentences, describe what we're doing here?
Sure. Thank you. That's weird, I'm seeing myself twice. So you have two bylaw amendments related to marijuana in front of you. The first bylaw amendment would prohibit all cultivation from activities from occurring in town as they pertain to adult-use marijuana. You would be prohibiting marijuana cultivators, craft marijuana cooperatives, and you would be restricting microbusinesses by prohibiting microbusinesses that cultivate. So that is the first set of changes. It requires two amendments to the zoning bylaw, one to the map, and then one to the allowed uses section. So you see that as one of the bylaws amendments before you. The second one is what I view as more of a cleaning up. I think we forgot to reference the MTCs, the medical facilities, in one of the sections pertaining to odor controls. And so this is just tightening that up by making sure that those facilities are complying with those requirements as we originally discussed.
And then the second article refers to, or you were-
Yes, sorry. So the second article, we are, right now it says the marijuana establishment shall incorporate backed technology. And I think we wanted to say the marijuana establishment or MTC.
Okay. And that is reflected in what I have before me. So let's, this has been, you know, our goal is to limit cultivation in town. So we are prohibiting, we're not prohibiting, we, well, this is always a problem, because we have a, we have existing marijuana, an existing marijuana cultivator, and this will not affect their ability to cultivate. But it would affect if they left and/or if someone else showed up wanting to cultivate. That's fairly, and this existing cultivator is both an adult use and a medical use cultivator. So this would pro, would preclude adult use and medical use. Now, most of us are not familiar with a craft marijuana cooperative or a microbusiness. And I'm told that there is a, one of these, is it one of these that it doesn't even exist in Massachusetts?
So I'm not aware that any facility has opened that is a craft cooperative or a microbusiness. I am aware that there are cooperatives, I'm sorry, microbusinesses in the permitting process with the Cannabis Control Commission, but I'm not aware of any that have opened.
So you distinguish, you, you made the distinction that a microbusiness will be prohibited from cultivation, but not necessarily from being a microbusiness?
Correct. So just to back up a step. So we have marijuana cultivators, that's your just standard cultivator facility. They can go up to the, the top tier, 100,000 square feet of canopy. That's what Sanctuary is. They are a marijuana cultivator. Then there are craft marijuana cooperatives, and these are, it was a license type that was created to allow, like a co-op type form of a business to, to form. And there can be different establishments in different communities across the Commonwealth, and they can kind of pool their resources together. But craft marijuana cooperatives can still be large. They can go up to the, to the biggest tier. So it could, from a planning perspective, still look very similar to a marijuana cultivator, but behind the scenes, it's operating very differently. And then you have microbusinesses. And these are what we call like small licensees. And so they are capped at tier one. So these are like 5,000 square feet of canopy. They're small establishments. These aren't going to be large cultivator facilities. Marijuana microbusinesses can be a cultivator, like I said, up to that 5,000, or they can just manufacture marijuana, so they can get it from somewhere else and then just manufacture it into a product. They're capped there, and I don't know actually off the top of my head what the capacity is, but they're very, they're, they have to keep it small, whatever they're producing. It has to be like small batch. Or they can do both activities. So what we're saying here is in Littleton, a microbusiness can operate, but the only thing that they could do is, is produce product. They wouldn't be able to cultivate. The direction that I got from this board through Marin was that you wanted to prohibit all cultivation in town. So we wanted to make sure we touched on all three different license types.
Okay. And we were educated during the Sanctuary hearings that the smell is primarily a function of the actual growing of the pot. Okay. So that being said, let's go around. Daryl?
Yeah, so there's a, I, the technical details of this can make this very complex to explain, as evident just by the quick, brief summary that we just received there. To me, I think if we summarize it in terms of currently, the town does not have craft marijuana cooperatives, the town does not have microbusinesses, the town does not have whatever the third category that we don't have. And this, this-
No, we, no, those are, no, we, we have medical and adult use.
No, I'm looking at the ones that are prohibiting.
So you currently have, there are three types of licensees that can cultivate. A marijuana cultivator, a craft marijuana cooperative, and a microbusiness. You currently have a marijuana cultivator in town that is Sanctuary. You do not have a craft marijuana cooperative or a microbusiness in town.
So the simplified piece here is we're banning, we're prohibiting any future marijuana cultivators. The town currently does not have any craft marijuana cooperatives, so we're capping that at zero. And the town currently doesn't have any microbusinesses that cultivate, therefore we're going to cap that at zero.
Correct, yeah.
That a very concise description that's accurate. And if we can keep the discussion to focus on those three points, I think we can avoid the long discussion about the technical nuances between these, because I don't think it matters relative to what we're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah. The only thing that I think from a technical standpoint should be explained is that we are not prohibiting medical cultivation. This is just pertaining to adult use.
Right.
Well, we're prohibiting any more medical, because we only have one, and we're only going to allow one.
We already did that.
Right, right.
Right.
We're not.
Right. No more can come in. But if Sanctuary shuts down, let's say, and they close up business, no one else can come in and operate an adult-use cultivation facility. But someone else could come in and operate a medicinal-
Yep.
-cultivation facility.
And the reason I was trying to maybe just keep them separate is because, one, we've already dealt with and is not really the topic of, of this piece here. And my goal is, is to keep the discussion straightforward, so that we don't go into a tangent about something that this isn't even, not even relevant to the modifications that we had, like the medical marijuana cultivator. I, I don't want to end up in a discussion on that, because that's not what we're talking about here. I want to make sure that we have an easy, crisp way of describing it to the public, similar to what, the way I paraphrased it back to you.
Although, Evria, you did, you have said that the MTC will not, will not allow us to preclude medicinal, so we have, we-
But that's already been addressed in the previous modifications.
Yes. However, if, if this one went away, someone else could show up. But-
Correct. That's the only, I, I agree. We should keep it simple. And, and really the, the description here is that you're prohibiting adult-use marijuana facilities from operating in town. There may be some prior, there may be some legally non-conforming establishments that can continue operating, but really what you are doing is prohibiting adult-use marijuana.
And the reason I'm proposing it that, talking about it that way is, is, is that would be my recommendation also, how we would present it at town meeting. And then if somebody asked about-
Yes.
-the medical marijuana, we have the technical answer for them. But if we put the technical answer to it in the presentation, we've blended together old business and new business, and it's going to open up a flood of questions and comments from the public.
Well, we, we-
Things that may not be relevant to what we're actually trying to accomplish with this.
We have a, an advantage in, this is short. The previous one was 10 pages, double spaced. So, I mean, you know, the overarching thing is we want to limit cultivation in town to the greatest degree possible.
I guess what I'm implying is, I, I can implicitly volunteer to do this presentation at town.
Okay. We, we need someone.
Keep it simple.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, obviously I want help putting the material together.
We'll, we'll outfit you with a shock collar, and we'll, if you go down-
Well, no, but I mean, I, I'm teeing up, I'm teeing up that I would volunteer to do it, and I'm also teeing up how I would probably go about presenting it.
No problem. And, and you have to understand the ins and outs. Yeah.
And, but the ins and outs would be, would I'd rather rely on having a technical-
Questions, yeah.
-answer a specific question, rather than preventing, providing too much background information that opens up questions not relevant to the article.
Great. So, any comments? We have a board of selectmen here.
I'm fine with it.
Or select board.
I, I hope that what Daryl's suggesting is what goes into, but the printout, so that it is very concise.
Okay. In the absence of comments-
I have additional questions.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Are they related to just the three points?
They are related. So I heard the word "map" being mentioned, and so we're, are we going to be presenting the map for any reason with this bylaw?
No, there's not an amendment to the map at this one. The map is the flood plane. The next, next half of this hearing.
Then I have a question about the second proposed amendment on this marijuana bylaw. So under air quality number one, it talks about greenhouses. And when I went back to the original bylaw that we addressed, or that we approved, I should say, there isn't any mention of greenhouse. So is this like a brand-new statement they were going to add? So it's under air quality number one. It says, "shall operate within an enclosed structure. For purposes of this section, greenhouse shall qualify as an enclosed structure."
I don't have that on mine.
I don't have that on mine either.
I have it on mine. And, and none of it's in red.
So if you would update the-
Yeah, mine wasn't in red either.
Right. So this is the pro, the one that we handed, I'm sorry.
We just had, I just had-
My fault. You hand out for this evening?
It just has two and three. And, and the issue, I think the greenhouse is interesting, because the cultivation that's done outside of structures is proving to be really problematic.
Right. So I'm, I'm going to back up a little bit. Sorry for not bringing that up earlier, and thanks for the question. So the version that we filed with town clerk was the first version. And then after working with town council, working through it, and from the discussions before, this is the version that we're recommending that you move forward with to town meeting floor.
So we only allow it hydroponically?
So that means that Daryl and I were looking at two different versions. When-
Sorry, Maran, I think I can help clarify. So the first version that was circulated shows, that has the red, that shows the changes to what's currently existing. So your current zoning bylaw, Section 200J1, is currently in place. So all we're adding is the red. What some people may be looking at is the draft warrant article. And for the draft warrant article, all I've done is identified Section J2 and J3, because we're not touching J1 as what is changing. So-
J1 is already existing?
Yeah. Your current bylaw, 200J1, reads as drafted in, or as written in, in the black. The only thing we've changed between what you currently have is the red or MTC.
Okay. So clearly we don't have the correct documents. I think it would be most helpful if there could be someone who sends us the bylaw that was approved and the changes in whatever format you want, with red lines, not red lines, but just so that we're all on the same page. Because-
Some, some of the difficulty comes in when we, and happy, happy to do that, yes. When, when the, some of the difficulty comes in is we're stacking this bylaw amendment on, before Town Code has had an opportunity to update the current printed version or published version of the zoning bylaw. That's a bit of a lengthy process. Town meeting does its vote, town clerk files with Attorney General's Office, Attorney General Office sends, sends back, hopefully with their approval, with their approval of this, the prior amendments from Fall Town Meeting. Then town clerk has, publishes notice of this new bylaw, and then there's a 30-day, 90-day period that public can, what's, what's the right word? Can contest that this bylaw was put in place properly. And then after that, that point, we can send it to General Code to be updated in the back.
And we haven't digested the, the Fall Town Meeting?
We haven't gotten through all of those steps yet. So where you're trying to do something in the fall, and then-
Or you're ready, then everybody else.
Then something in the spring, then.
Right.
That's, yeah.
So tonight, we-
So we both looked at what was on.
We want to, well, the goal was to advance-
Kick the can along the road.
The selectmen. And they have a, they have a-
They have a hard deadline.
They have a hard deadline.
No, I, I'm there. I'm, I think what I'm just trying to make sure that I'm reading the right stuff.
Absolutely. And, and you in particular will need to know the right stuff.
And so the part I'm looking at is on page two of the link that was on the packet there. So I'm reading something that says, "Proposed Amendment 2, Expanding Special Permit Requirements,"
Yeah.
Which is different than this piece here that says, "Draft Warrant Article 2."
Right.
Which one is what we're proceeding with?
Right. Because one has three items, and the other one is two.
Yes. They're exactly the same. So Maran asked for two different documents. I think that might be part of the confusion. When you look at the, the document that says, "Draft Amendments Part 2, Expanding Special Permit Requirements," this is taking what is currently in your bylaw. You, you can see there's no warrant language. It's just what is in your currently approved zoning bylaw. And in red, I've indicated what we've changed, or what we propose changing, which is incorporating the "or MTC" in sub-part 2 and sub-part 3. we propose changing, which is incorporating the or MTC in subpart two and subpart three.
Okay.
The other document, which is the warrant article, is how this would appear on the warrant if the planning board decides to move it forward and the Select Board adds it. There's no need to reference subpart one on the warrant, because we're not touching it. And so that's why the warrant only shows subpart two and subpart three, but the text is the same. The text that is being proposed is the same.
Okay. So the only part that I have a problem with, I understand now, you know, the, the difference there, is the phrase expanding special permit requirements. I've always considered that we were doing administrative correction to include MTCs that we did, not that we were expanding special permit requirements.
Right. And that's part of why I asked that question.
That's just me using descriptive terms.
From my perspective and what I think at town meeting, they're going to latch on to expanding requirements, and then we're going to be down a rat hole of questions about, let's go back to number one, right? You, you know, that, that kind of thing here, and I'm, I'm looking for, you know, the balance between making sure that we're very technically specific and correct, but also making sure it's using language that indicates the intent that we had behind it. And the intent on these amendments was a clerical correction, not to actually expand the requirements. Because somebody reading this here is going to come to me and say, why are you expanding these requirements? And I really, all I want to say is, is we're doing a clerical correction that was missed at, at the previous town meeting. Two, those are two totally different things when I talk about it to people.
Yeah. So that's part of why I'm asking if we can get a copy of whatever was finalized from the last town meeting. Diane always has her final stamped copy, whatever that is, and then the copy that you're referencing, Evria, that you're saying has red on it, this does not have any red, and both Daryl and I took this from the link that was given to us.
Right, and that one doesn't have red, because it was scanned back to us in black and white.
Yeah. So that, that's why it's hard to understand.
At the, in the, in the terms of completing the discussion, and Mr. Chair, in order to move forward here, I'm comfortable with the two draft articles, if that's what we need to put forward to the Selectmen. I reviewed these.
I would like a motion.
Quickly here, and, and understand the difference between the two documents.
I think we understand the, the new, the small changes we need to make, what we advance. So can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Close, close the hearing.
Close the hearing.
Okay. Second.
Did you poll the audience?
Well, yeah, well, Mark.
I already did.
Second, all in favor?
I.
I'd like a motion to advance this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make.
Draft warrant to the Selectmen to consider whether, well, we want to advance this warrant anyway, but particularly to the Selectmen to consider allowing it on the town ballot.
Town meeting.
Well, we have town meeting and town ballot.
Okay, yep, sorry.
Can I have a mo, someone say so moved?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Daryl.
Aye.
Anna. Bartlett. Mark.
Oh, aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. So, thank you, Evria.
Thank you.
Next. We are opening a public hearing, and Marin has read the verbiage that is credited to Daryl, for zoning bylaw amendment, wetlands and floodplain bylaw, proposal to amend existing bylaw, and this has come about because of changes in FEMA flood maps and their way of looking at these bylaws. So to some degree, we are being required to accept these changes now. We have a lot of, since we have these great images, I'd like some orientation to them, but also, Evria, or, do we saw Evria on this? Okay. So, we have.
Right, so this is a, a version of the bylaw that we did get back from the full state review, and has, there were only two notes, and I have recommendations on to how to handle those notes. That's what's written in.
Okay, so I see that deleting the flood hazard, hazard boundary map, because something else is used.
That deposition is not needed.
And then the zoning board of appeals as the reviewing board. Okay, now, so let's put this aside for a minute, and then let's talk about the maps. Cooper, I know you've been working with these. Were you able to understand whether there were any material differences between the old and the new maps?
I didn't have.
Okay. I, I, you know, I mean, I, I think it goes down to individual properties, possibly, and it's not particularly our purview to assess what those are.
That was my notice for both.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. But I'm really interested in seeing an aerial view of the quarry, but anyway.
So, so just a question, point of procedure, these maps are not open for discussion. They're, these are as presented.
Absolutely not. It's just, yeah.
Here's the quarry right here.
And for the most, for the most part, the bylaw isn't either, because we need to follow through with this to protect people who seek flood insurance in town, of which you said there are about a dozen.
Yeah. DCR let us know that they think there are 11 or 12 households or properties in, in Littleton that currently carry flood insurance.
So if we don't follow through with this, those property owners will not be able to get flood insurance?
Yeah, Littleton could be dropped from the flood, National Flood Insurance Program, would not be available for homeowners to purchase.
Okay. And there may be other homeowners who purchase flood insurance through their homeowners, but probably not. Anyway, so.
Yeah, I guess that's, you know, it was kind of two parts. One, so this is informational, but it's not open for debate.
Not really, no.
Right, right. However, how does somebody know if they, their status has been changed? Do they receive something from somebody, or do they have to proactively look up their lot number and check?
From the town's process, they would have to look up their property.
It'd be done as a property owner.
Correct.
Thing here, and their insurance company is not necessarily going to notify them or anything. It's a personal responsibility.
The bank will notify you if you come, if you go into a floodplain. And I know, I know that for a fact, because they did it to me. So, yeah, they'll, if your property all of a sudden goes into a floodplain, they're going to want insurance on it, and.
If, if you got a mortgage, right, the mortgage holder.
We have a mortgage, yeah.
And if you're not, don't have a mortgage, it's a personal responsibility whether, again, those would be just points I think we'd want to make to people.
And if you're purchasing a property, you would, you know, would be.
Their title search would probably show.
The new floodplain.
Right, and, and then just another caution, 10 years ago, or so, when we did this last time, updated the maps, there were some underhanded, disreputable, maybe, insurance company that were reaching out to property owners, saying, guess what, your property has changed, you need to buy this heavy-duty insurance from us. So I would set, you know, just put that caution out there to, if you get any information like that, you know, call town hall, and we'll help you with three of them.
But I'm, I'm just also, in terms of how we would be framing this to the public, most of this is not open for discussion. This is just, you know, these are the maps, you know, and they're a matter of fact. It's not a matter of decis, you know, decision here. We have no discretion to change any of this information. Right?
You, you do at the peril of the process, yeah.
I have two questions.
Yes.
So I get that we've got the bylaw, the written bylaw, but how are residents who are going to vote on this going to look at these maps? Or are they going to look at the maps?
They have to go to GIS.
Okay.
And then, and then screen, you know, then screened for floodplain, and then screened for property boundaries, and, and I, I would imagine that people who would do that are, you know, like in the Beaverbrook area, Bartlett, you should check.
I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure that, that somewhere we have the easily accessible link for folks, because if they're preparing for town meeting and looking at this, and they're going, huh, I wonder if I'm in, in this new floodplain.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the reasons we spent so much space on the floodplain bylaw page, saying these are the different ways you can look at, at the properties.
The other thing is, if we do nothing, it's, they're going to go in.
No, I, I get that. I'm just wanting to make sure that our residents are informed.
No, they would, they would have to, and, Henry, if someone came into your office and said, I want to, I, you know, I think I might be in the floodplain, what would you say to them? Would you say, go onto the website, and they go, I don't even have a computer? Like, what would, what would happen?
The JS maps.
JS is probably the best way for them.
But, but could they be accessed like in the planning office?
On the front counter. Well, actually, on the front counter, we have the computer with the big monitor there, and we've all been known to walk residents through how to look up.
Sure, that's my question. Okay, great.
Yeah, just so that we have an answer to that question about. And then the second one was that they, under the purpose in here, it specifically talks about wanting to make sure that emergency response is in the know, water quality contamination. So my question is, has the planning board, planning department, sorry, requested input from the potentially impacted department, you know, like fire, police, light and water, health department? Again, from the standpoint of how they need to be in the know about this.
About a zoning bylaw? I'm happy to reach out to whoever you choose.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, it would be fire, police. I, I think it's probably more pertinent to coastal areas.
Well, and, and then, you know, as, as we close, get closer to town meeting, having their input.
Yeah.
On file would be good.
The only thing to fight if I'm going to want is another inflatable.
A boat, yeah.
And have a boat, that's all.
Bartlett wants a boat, too. Maybe you could.
Have a canoe, so.
Okay. Okay, any other comments?
I think we did.
Can I have a motion to approve the floodplain, the draft floodplain bylaw proposal before us to bring forward to town meeting? I have to close the hearing first.
Yeah, you've been out of the year. You think you got.
I'm sorry. So can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So.
Can I have a second? Okay. Now, can I have the proposal that I spoke of before, to approve the draft floodplain bylaw proposal to bring to town meeting?
Amendment.
But beforehand, I'm going to say aye. We closed it, but we didn't vote to close it.
Oh. Good point. Daryl?
Aye.
Chair, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mark?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, if I had this, I would be doing that. Okay. Next, can I have a vote to recommend the proposed wetlands and floodplain zoning bylaw as discussed in zoning, well, I don't think this is written correctly, but to bring forward to the town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Daryl?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, now, yes.
Before we move on, those two articles, are you guys also voting to recommend them before they go to print?
Yes.
So that was part of your vote? I'm just, just for clarity.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is no more moving on. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. We are hereby adjourned.
I don't want to adjourn.
Daryl, Daryl, Daryl.
Oh, I was outloaded.